Alright. Okay, does everybody got a chance to look at the bills? Alright. Do I have a motion to pay the bills? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
So which one made the motion?
Delmer and David.
And Dave.
Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mark?
Yeah.
Alright.
I missed that for the last time.
Mark Ross with Flingner Associates here to talk to you about the bids that we opened on the water tower rehabilitation project. We opened those on the twenty-fifth of April. Got two bids, lowest bid was from Viking Painting of La Vista, Nebraska. At three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We had another bid from Maguire Iron, their rehab rehabilitation group that was higher than that. And our estimate was three twenty-eight, eight fifty, actually both bids were below our estimate, so that's good. So, and I believe both bids are below your budget for the project as well. So, we took the bids back, we put a tabulation together. I think you have a copy of it in your manila envelope there of the tabulation of the two bids and our recommendation letter on that. So you can take a look at that if you want to. But we've worked with Maguire Iron in the past, but not the rehabilitation division. They build new water towers as well. We've not worked with Viking. We researched qualifications of both, looked at their safety records that we had required them to submit, and called a couple of references on each. Basically, from what I can see is that I don't see anything that would point me to not recommending going with a low bid. They're about eight thousand dollars cheaper than the second bid. And, you know, I just, as I noted in the letter, past performance is not a guarantee of future performance. So, you know, I can't, they're only as good as the current project they're working on. So, but Viking's been around, I think, since 2018. They're doing a lot of work in this area in the Midwest. They're a pretty good-sized firm. I do know a current employee there that used to work for another tank company, and I know an employee that's a past employee from there. But I don't have any reason to think that they won't do a good job on this project. Did talk to them a little bit about schedule. It's something that they thought they would complete this year, so it won't drag into next year. At least that's their plan. So that's kind of important as well. We don't want to have a half-painted tank through the winter time. So, it's our recommendation that the Notice of Award, you know, the mayor be authorized to issue the Notice of Award to Viking Painting for three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Do you have questions?
Did they give you any kind of timeline of when they might be able to do it?
Uh, yeah, they were thinking possibly late June, early July, get in here. So, that actually might be good because we've got a, we've already done some coordination with the bank and the school on some antennas that we have up there. And it might be better for the schools to not be in operation in the summer as opposed to the fall.
Get it done before corn fest?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and when is corn fest specifically?
The second weekend in September.
Weekend after Labor Day.
Okay.
The weekend after Labor Day.
Okay, so we'll have to make sure the contractors are aware of that too. So if they still are working for some reason, we can get that site kind of protected and buttoned up a little bit, so.
Well, if we're in agreement, I would like to make the motion that we authorize you to sign the Notice of Award and contract documents for Viking Painting LLC.
Okay. Do we have a second? Delmer? Does anyone need more discussion on it? Do you have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So it's a five and O?
No, I haven't heard from all of them.
Are they gonna like tar it and everything?
Yeah, they'll contain it up, that's one of the bid items. Yeah, they gotta tar it when they're painting.
Yeah.
Yep.
They blasting it or anything, or just?
Yeah, they'd be blasting and painting. That's the original paint coat from nineteen ninety-six.
Yep.
And so you've gotten a heck of a life out of that. So it's lasted about eight to ten years longer than it normally would.
Yeah.
So is that four?
Yeah, I was just waiting for Rick to, he's reading something.
I think you have three fifty in your budget for that?
Right.
So it came in within your budget.
It seems like a lot of money to paint a water tower though.
It's, it is a lot of money now. We've, I tell you what, paint will shock you, and it really went up during COVID because we couldn't get the raw materials to make the paint from overseas. And then it really hasn't come back down a whole lot. It's, I would say this project, I think when we looked at it three years ago, we were in the two thirty, two fifty range.
Yeah.
I would have had it right at two hundred thousand.
Yeah, and we just did, we opened bids on another rehab project in Pleasant Hill, Illinois about six weeks ago, and it was right in this range too. Same, that tower's actually fifty thousand gallons larger, so it's, it's.
Who's gonna hit?
A company called Tricote. They didn't bid this one.
Yeah.
So, the two numbers were within two percent of each other. So that's, that's pretty telling of the market. And they're both above, above my estimates, or below my estimate.
No, I'll second it.
Okay.
While we were second to this one?
Did you, you're okay with?
Five and O.
Five and O, okay.
So you go ahead and sign it off, and then send it with Mark will have that.
So we'll come back to the next meeting with the contract documents, insurance, and bonds and all that stuff. So issue a notice to proceed, so that's.
Yeah, we definitely need that.
Yep, yep.
Alright, so. Do you want to say that on me? Yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright, so now we have the bids towards a playground. Okay, we have a bid from Randy and Pam Doss of fifty dollars. Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
For each?
They've built, bid.
Yeah, you're not a nice guy, two hundred bucks.
Yeah, Sparks.
Oh, you're, for each piece?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a bid from Jesse Sparks for two hundred dollars for each piece.
Yeah, two hundred for the merry-go-round, two hundred for the.
I love my grandkids, what can I say?
They're cheap, if you're buying a new one.
And a bid from Max Mayer of a hundred and fifty dollars. So.
Is that for one or just for both?
So. Hundred and fifty for both.
One fifty?
Okay. Fifty, four hundred, and a hundred and fifty.
So the high bid then thus far is for Sparks is would be four hundred for both, but then the others have the option if anybody wants to.
Wants to raise their bid.
Raise their bid.
Okay. I'll raise to five hundred. Okay. For both. Jesse's six hundred.
Six hundred.
I'll go six fifty.
Seven, I feel like an auctioneer. You don't sound like one.
That is your role tonight, yes.
Okay, Jesse's up to seven hundred.
I'll go seven fifty.
Okay.
Eight hundred.
He'll do eight hundred.
I'll do nine hundred.
Okay.
Nine fifty.
I'll go a thousand.
Okay.
Eleven.
Okay.
I'll go twelve.
My wife said let her have it. But mine would swing instead.
It's Randy and Pam's for eleven hundred dollars.
Alright.
We're building a playground.
Oh, thank you.
We just built a playground for her.
We're building a playground for the H City community. That's the only one that had a check in it.
What'd you do?
I've tried it out.
Should I leave it somewhere else?
Alright, and you'll get with them and take care of all that?
Throw it on the desk.
Okay. Alright, do we need to do any motions or anything on that, or we just? Congratulations, thank you.
No, unless you want to vote to accept the eleven hundred dollars.
Nobody's gonna argue that one. Okay, Kathy?
Yeah.
Well, thank you Randy and Pam, that's very kind of you.
So Margaret, I'll stop by tomorrow, is that okay?
Thank you.
Or do you want it now? I was gonna say, I was gonna, I was gonna go this way while you're doing it this way.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Thank you.
Some of these, it's like, there's so little.
Um, just, yeah. Okay, what that contains is the twenty-two and twenty-three unpaid real estate tax and just the twenty-three personal property along with the other delinquent accounts, and that's on the last page. I would report that for twenty-three, we've collected ninety-six percent of the real estate and ninety-two percent of their personal properties, so that's.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Probably done in the other years.
It's about the same.
Okay.
At this time. You know, any of the two-year delinquent real estate taxes, if they don't get paid, they'll be turned over to the collector at the courthouse and be sold at the courthouse door. And my main goal tonight are the other delinquent accounts. I would propose that we write off one through eight. I would like to be able to move them to bad debt within our system. In the event any of those customers want service again, they have to pay that. We can collect that at that time, or we will not provide service. However, customer five is a rural trash customer, we just won't provide service again to them. So I entertain.
Their trash is done.
Their trash will be done, yeah, we will not.
Our motion?
I'll second.
To write off one through eight?
Yep.
One through eight.
Anybody got any questions about that, or want to discuss anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then I just need to collect these back.
No, you don't get to take them.
We don't need him at the coffee shop.
You don't?
No.
Okay, listen, this, sorry.
Yeah, he is, but it just says, yeah, I'm taking off.
I'm out to anything.
No.
And Kathy, that is an excellent collection.
Thank you.
Anything over ninety percent, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's very good. We appreciate.
And if we make it.
Thank you.
We have to collect them before they want any more services?
Yeah, and we collect, if you saw it at the bottom, they were like two.
Yeah, I think that's all.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, Miss Peggy?
Yes.
Good, Delmer.
You are up. Does anybody have any questions for that?
Nope, looks good to me.
Okay, are for funds, we've got five hundred dollars left. I'm sure we'll find something to use that for in the next couple of years.
Probably needs some pickleball nets and.
And that's what I was thinking, probably, we've been down at our park.
Well, I will say that park, there's people there every night playing.
Yeah, I don't know about playing, but.
Well, they're bouncing a basketball whenever I.
Yeah, I've heard people thrilled with that, so that's good.
Yes, it's good. I think we, I know I talked to Roger one time, I was thinking, maybe we could see if at Corn Fest they would do their three-on-three tournament down there.
That'd be great.
I know, because they got beautiful balls.
Have they done that?
No, they haven't.
Yeah, that would be, anything we can get them to use that part for.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, it looks so nice.
It's high five.
It sure does.
That's really nice. My visitor with Roger a little bit, our street fund. In four months, we've used fifty percent of our budget. So he and I are gonna get together this week and look at that and see what we can do, because we're gonna run out of money in the street fund. And street fund is not something we have more funds available. You know, we've already spent almost thirty-eight thousand more than has come in this year. So we've got to turn it around somehow, and, you know, we've kind of discussed it because there's only four funds that we can do salaries out of. You know, he's got the water sewer sanitation and then streets. The other funds are doing fine, but our streets are not. And I know a lot of that is partly because our, anything, mowing and parks has been, what they've been doing is probably in the street fund right now, so. So we're gonna evaluate that and kind of look a little deeper and see if we can get things turned around in that fund. The other funds are doing fine. We actually have about ninety-eight thousand available in the transportation fund for street materials. So we've got the materials, it's just the labor side of things.
Yeah, I think we got all the materials bought, don't we? For like the streets.
Oh, I'm sure there's gonna be more materials bought, Roger.
Roger, we got all the materials bought for the streets and stuff.
It's not him.
So it's not paid for?
Right.
So it's not showing up, so, okay.
If I hadn't had a book, I could tell you what's left.
And, and I want.
We're gonna need now.
I can do that. I think we're gonna do that third year or so.
Alright.
Capital Outlay. We did order computer for the water department. It kind of became a critical situation, we're having to borrow. And I think Mike is gonna bring it up here in a minute, that we need a software update. And it is, it is at the critical stage, you know, we've got to go too long. So he's gonna bring that up, so when he does, it's, the bid that he's giving you is that five thousand, eight hundred and fifty, and potentially the training will be less, depending on how long it takes them to do the training. But we'll need to amend the budget for the water and sewer fund to, to do that when you approve that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. We can go over these, you want to, or you got questions, just ask them as we go down, just read them. I'm just hoping to talk to Lee today, see how many pages was, kind of idea what it was. Supposed to get back to me with what he thinks.
The playground looks good, Roger.
There you go, we've done good.
That Robbin.
Michael Robbins passed his test.
The router that, in the bathroom? Do you think you can get it secured where they won't steal it?
Yeah.
Since they're stealing.
They will put it in the one, one beside it where they don't get in.
We're only using one bathroom, one of them's vacant, we're using it as a closet. We thought we'd stick it in there, because it's all locked anyway, that's where we can turn the water on and off. You put it in there, you can't get to it, but you still have a wiper.
Do you come up with a solution to keep them from seeing on the lights out of the shelter houses?
Well, camera might help.
Yeah. I should run a hot war to them.
I'd like to. They take them.
I was down there and they stole the whole can light out of the top, out of the ceiling.
Yeah, they're picking tables, yeah, they take them all the time.
That's crazy.
Takes a few just to ruin everything.
Yeah, we had one riding on the goals, I guess, for it to cut the sea and talk to a little bit, so.
Pardon?
We had one riding on the goals, setting on it.
Crank it all the way down, then they ride it all the way up.
Then they ride it all the way up and then you let it go and just go clear down, boom.
Always make them stationary.
They are, they're ten foot right now, there's no more cranking, they're stationary.
Were you missing a crank also?
Crank got stolen too.
I'll say no, but, yeah.
Just stuck at ten foot with padlocks on it now.
Yeah, they're not going anywhere.
Good.
Be nice to first get cameras for that down there.
That's what I'm trying, it's not a big expense, it'd be a big deal. Because they go through there and spend that.
It's bad that we have to do that, because we spent all that money for.
Yeah.
Well, there's five hundred dollars left in the ARCA funds. We'll have to see what we can get and do and.
That'd be nice.
Which is number sixteen, would like to get a hot computer?
For me at work, you know, for we can call like dig right and stuff. I guess I come up here and use Margaret's to do dig right, because it's a lot easier to call them, because they're kind of picking when you call them. And if you do it yourself, it's, you can go right through it, it's a lot quicker.
Yeah, mark all everything off, it's quick.
Yeah.
There you go.
So you caught the boys that was sitting on the ground?
We know who did it, so I didn't.
Do they have a parole officer?
He has a parole officer.
He already does?
Yes.
Yeah. Are they juveniles?
No.
Oh.
Are they juvenile? No.
Yeah, they're of age.
We didn't know if someone to pursue it, or be done with it, or what. Pursue it.
Do we have the evidence to?
Well, I mean, there's nothing to pursue other than.
We did Terry's.
Ban, but, you know, we banned him from the, banned him from the.
We got parole tags on him.
They're locked up soon.
I'm afraid they were gonna get hurt on us.
Yeah, it's kind of a stand on top of it, I'm sure that's popular.
I know it's hard to find somebody to lock it up, but lock it up after a certain time, you know?
They still get in there though. You walk around, get in.
A little, we can lock them too, I guess, don't we? We can do it, you know?
They're clocking.
Yeah, I know. Middle of the day.
Yeah, they're gonna do it anyways.
I'd lock it up at ten o'clock.
Yeah, they said they caught this kid, or this kid did that at three in the afternoon.
Yeah.
I didn't know if y'all want to, you know, talk to the judge, his parole officer, what do you want to do?
I'm gonna talk to the drug court official, I'm gonna do a report for the judge, and I just need to know if you guys are gonna ban the two from the park?
Nineteen or twenty, I don't know how old he is.
Should have been working.
Say that again, Ryan.
I said I didn't know, before I done my report, if you guys wanted to ban the two from the park?
I would say yes.
They'll give you something else, though.
I think I'll like show people that, yeah, we're not, we're not.
Well, I give my, piece of my mind, I like to, he wasn't sticking around to.
I'd say we can ban them at least for a set amount of time, you know, six months, a year.
What do you think?
Hmm?
Speak it.
What?
That's what they down at park, I caught them on ball.
He caught them.
He caught them.
Oh, you caught them?
Yeah. I cheated with one down there, and they took off, didn't want to hear it.
My suggestion is ban them for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of banning them for a year from the park?
So if we have a, you made a motion.
I make a motion, we ban them for a year from.
Don't make it.
You second it?
Okay, I'll make a motion and.
David second.
And David second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Can't vote, Roger, did we just vote?
No, just grab my pen and move it around here.
Does he get his pen stuck out?
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
We did all the work over there behind the Blue Room, it's that old two-story house.
Our reward.
Did he buy that?
Blue Room bought that.
Are they gonna tear it down?
I don't know, I haven't heard, but Blue Room bought it, is what I heard. Or Robert worked on it, because he said if you put brush out there, we'll pick it up.
Yeah.
He was wanting to know if they could put that up for, on the, sign it up for the tear-down list. I said, can bring it in to do it.
I, well, I understand he hadn't bought it.
They was working on it.
He has to show ownership.
More indeed, yeah, they have to show ownership.
Yeah, clear title.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Oh, yeah.
There's another one working on it now too, if I can get someone to buy it to clean it up.
Has Durbin's come and picked up all that scrap metal from the spring cleanup yet?
It's done, but we're gonna haul the rest of it all from here, so yeah, it's all done.
Good.
They're, they're done.
Good deal.
So Stephanie Bennett, they've got trees, there's an alleyway there, they're on us. She wants us to cut them and clean it up. I don't know where the right of way is there, I'm not sure how to do this.
Well, obviously, we don't have a survey.
No.
That shows, so it's not our issue to know precisely.
I just, I didn't realize there was an alley behind your house.
Is the, is the alley even open at the time?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Where all them trees are, that's an alley.
Yeah, it's never been closed.
Are we able to shortcut and clean up those trees, or?
Yeah, probably had to be topped by a red car. I would guess, I'd have to look.
Yeah.
Something like that, run?
I don't know, I, I need to look at it. I thought maybe one or two here could go down with me and we talk to her and see what we're thinking.
Wouldn't that be, cut some trees for us, he's pretty reasonable.
Oh, he is reasonable.
He does a good cleanup job.
And we can make it in there with our truck, it just has to see how tall and what it is. But I thought a couple, three, go there and we'd look around. She called me the other day, and I'd have it done.
Okay. Well, see what you can find out.
Okay.
We can go from there.
And the truck's down at the city lot, is it first come, first served, or the guys that pay?
Yes, it's first come, first served.
Okay, so the guys that pay.
The only ones that we have the actual agreement with is the ones that are paying us for plugging in.
For plugging in us.
I mean, you know the ones.
Like, then they're not. So, like, then they're not, that doesn't matter if they're not the first to park there, if somebody else already.
Where they plug in, that's their.
That's in the winter time.
That's their, yeah, but they're.
They're paying it.
They're a lot, I mean, they're paying to lease that, it's a lot agreement, so, yeah.
Yeah, but that's where we put our materials, so that's getting ready to go bye-bye for them.
They've already paid for this year.
Well, you could guarantee them a numbered spot until winter time.
Barrel for the place to plug in.
Now, they, they know they move every year, and they have before you and I got here, I mean, cause that's where our material is.
Well, this is just a new thing with them, though.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more trucks parking there right now, there's several now.
And it's down on the other part of the lot where all the trucks park.
Yeah, I think they used to buy that building to where they got the plugins, what they.
That's when, that's where that, they only plug, do it up in winter up there.
Yeah, that's the main thing.
Yeah, so they, they, they called me and said, do we get our parking place down there, or do we not get it no more, or what?
I'll pull the agreement out and see what it says, because they've paid us, we have the agreement, they, and then the, the rest of the area is first come, first served, I mean, the city provides the, the lot for the trucks.
Okay.
So, back to Michael Robbins, I think, did you mention him kind of briefly?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, he completed his training, he passed his test.
So, he gets a fifty cent?
So, we need a motion now for somebody to say, we want to implement his fifty cent.
How do you think?
Water distribution test.
I make the motion to.
Yeah.
David.
Give Michael Robbins a fifty cent or wage increase for passes, uh, training.
Okay, cause now he's, uh, his water license.
We gotta have it.
The dormer's second.
We gotta have it.
So, David and.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, give Michael a fifty cent raise.
All right.
Fine.
Okay.
All in favor. You got anything else, Roger?
Uh-uh. Just, what we talked about, just.
Oh, um, did you, I asked him about the art class at school, we'll paint an eagle in the middle of that new basketball court? What are your thoughts on that? Go come and do it free of charge.
I'm for it.
So, they'll do what?
Paint an eagle.
Well, they'll paint some lines on the outside of it.
The mascot.
We got that, we got that.
Yeah, like in the center.
We're gonna paint the lines.
I'm for it.
And then Roger had thought too, maybe, see what you guys think about, like, the mascots from the old schools in town, like, Purland and Berry.
Same Joe, Berry.
Kinda like smaller, put it around.
Put them on outskirts and just put them on, that'd be cool.
What was a crusader look like?
A crusader?
Yeah.
What does a crusader look like?
Well, I mean, there's crusaders, and then there's crusaders.
There, there are no more.
Crusader, with the helmet and the.
Yeah.
The armor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
In green.
Yep, in green.
I don't think we ever had a mascot actually show up at our place. Maybe in your time, but not.
All right.
It's all good.
So, Mike Wright, you're gonna, you're gonna introduce Mike Wright, or did he leave?
I'm here.
Mike Wright, you're here?
I'm here.
Yeah.
He's here.
He's gonna explain.
Well, thank you pretty well, hit it on the head, there's not, we've, our software for our meter reading, um, we've been nursing it along, we've had several problems with it the last five or six months, we haven't. It's either she's got a problem on her end with the computer, or we've got an end, problem on our end with the, um, tablet, um, the laptop that we bought for the water and wastewater is gonna solve the tablet problem. Um, but, we need to do a software update, which is rather expensive, I see, I didn't realize that stuff was that high, um, but, it's right at almost six thousand dollars. Um, but, we're kind of dead in the water, we can't read it without it, so.
And you use the Grange?
We use, we, we borrowed the Granges, and we can probably do that another month or so, but, uh, and we're probably gonna have to, it's gonna take us a month or so for them to get the software downloaded, plus training and everything, for everybody to line up and get all that done. We may not be able to get that done by the end of this month, so we may be borrowing again this month, anyway. Um, with this new software, this brings us to today's software, as far as the, this software will be able to handle the cell meters and stuff, they, those are an upgrade from what we do have. Um, the cell is, it'll communicate, it'll, it'll tell her right now in real time what the reading is, with a press of a button. It, but, that's, we don't have those style of meters, um, and they're expensive to buy, to purchase, um, I, we don't need that at this time, but there's probably gonna be a time in the future that that's all there is, you know, I mean, it just keeps going along. So, this software will do that, it will keep us in today's market, at least with that, um, I just kinda need a, yeah, it's okay, we didn't plan on that for the bu, everything with, at November, December time, everything seemed to kind of smoothed out, and we've. Had ironed out a few of our problems, and things had read two or three months in a row really good, and we thought, new computer to eliminate that tablet is gonna fix it. Well, we keep having a software update problem where our tablet's trying to update to the new software, and Kathy's computer doesn't have it, so, we have, we need to.
So, it'll be on every, every computer that's involved with, with the water department and reading meters and?
Yeah, they'll be, uh, like, the computer that we'll have will have a different, we won't have the same stuff as she's got, uh, just.
But it's all.
It's all, yeah, it's all gonna be combined, um, we're gonna have to use her, so, she's gonna transfer the meters over onto our computer through a thumb drive, and then we can open it up through there, have a map and be able to read everything through with the truck and the radio signals that, all of that.
How old is that system? Cause I remember when we put that in.
It's, uh, it was right, it, it's gotta be fifteen years, twelve, fifteen years.
Yeah.
Was it possible eleven?
Which, which is a good point, when we did that, we did a, pretty much a total meter rehab program, that's twelve, fifteen years. Um, they say you ought to start replacing it ten years, so, I know we've been budgeting money for our water tower, we have.
Yeah.
We got, we got another project that we can put that money towards, because we, we're gonna have to start doing five, ten percent meter replacement every year till we get caught back up. If we do ten percent every year, by the time you get done, you gotta start right back over, you know, that kind of thing, so, whatever we can figure out with Peggy of what we can afford to budget for, that'll be in your twenty, twenty-five budget, I'm sure.
So, Peggy won't need to move as many over to water and sewers, so they can?
Uh, yeah, just when you approve this, if you, or make your motion, if you just, um, amend the budget in the water accordingly, for capital outline.
So, it needs to be two motions?
No, it can all be combined in the same time.
So, you said like fifteen hundred dollars?
Fif, I think it's, the quotes.
Fifty-eight, fifty.
Fifty and fifty is what the quote is.
Fifty-eight, fifty, yes.
And it, and it could be a little bit cheaper, he said he, he schedules for two days of training, if it ends up being one day or a day and a half, then some of that training will come off of there, so it shouldn't be any more than that, at all.
Yeah, it could be a little less.
Could be a little less.
Do we have a motion to buy the software update and amend the budget accordingly?
And amend the budget, did you say out of capital improvement for water?
Capital outline.
I'll make a motion. Okay.
Stacy.
Any, any more questions, or anybody wanna talk about it, or?
What do you think we need to spend to bring it up, like in the future, what we need to spend every year to bring up our meters?
Oh, well, all, income-wise, it, as much as you can, you know, I mean, cause whatever, whatever's leaking by, you know, those meters, they start out ninety-eight point nine percent's what they're limitate, you know, that's what they're have to read coming out of the factory. Um, you know, some of them, uh, uh, each one of them could be only reading seventy-five percent, eighty percent, things like, so, that's all revenue going out, so as much as we can afford without putting ourselves in a crunch is what I'd like to see.
So, let's get the water tower paid for.
Yeah, we kinda see what.
Go from there.
See where we're go, yeah, see where we're at, see where, what kind of money.
What do you think for a whole plate thing, like two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand?
I think it was, what, what, it's a hundred and nineteen when we did it, twelve years.
I was gonna say it's like.
It's a hundred and nineteen, hundred and twenty when we did it.
It's gonna be half as much, probably.
Twice as much, probably.
Obviously, a lot more now.
Yeah, and then, then you gotta make up the decision if you wanna try and go with the newer technology, we can limit, you know.
Well, we'll just go with the newer.
It will go with it, all that software will go.
That's what I'm getting with, sorry.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that if we decide that's the route we're gonna go, and say, and we don't have to do that, we, we can wait five years before you start doing the cell.
Well, I just wonder if we do this, and once something, we're in our church, in our op with it, when we do it.
That was my big question, was how long, I, I, it's just like technology, you can't.
Yeah, three years is all.
You know what I said, but I don't wanna buy this, and then in twenty twenty-five, you go, well, there's a new technology we're using now that we're switching everything over to, and he said, no, we just did that this year, so. That, hopefully, we're right on schedule where we're not gonna be left. Where we use it for six months, and then it's out of date, that, I don't wanna get into that situation.
All right, all in favor of the new program and transferring the money, amending the budget?
Ah.
My.
All in favor.
Thank you very much, Michael thanked you too, he was awful nervous about that, that's the first time, maybe give them the results the minute they finish their test.
They do.
They used to have to wait thirty or forty-five days, and they'd either mail you the no, you failed letter, or mail you your certificate, but, because they have to do it online, um, they, it, it's, test is calculated, as soon as they hit done, it tells you how many you missed right there, what your score is and everything, so he was excited.
How many hours you gotta have to keep that up every year?
Like with his, I think he needs twenty hours every three years, um, mine's thirty hours.
Every year?
Every, every three years, and I'm.
That's so bad.
Yeah, and then the A, the wastewater is the same thing, it's, it's thirty hours every three years, now, Caleb's is every, is thirty hours every three years, and it's, that's the way it is for wastewater across the board, doesn't matter the, the level. Um, but with your D S, it changes with levels, the more, the higher level you get, the more retraining hours you have to have every three years.
Okay.
But, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mark.
Got anything else, Roger?
No, I don't.
Okay. Right.
All right, Roger.
Skip the beginning.
Well, go ahead.
Any questions, concerns about the report? We covered some of it.
You keep getting false alarms at the bank?
Yeah, we had several of them. One was like two in the morning, and others were decent time, but.
Same bank, or?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
We're still having trouble with fraud?
Yeah, always, all the time.
Pardon?
It's all the time, a lot of scams, the fraud, so.
I was gonna ask you, I seen a truck, a van the other day, it's Flagpole Solutions.
Mm-hmm.
Are they doing work in town around here, because their friend.
I don't know if they're feeding home.
Okay. I didn't know if they were, it's kind of strange, they were driving around town real slow on Sunday, I think, yeah, I almost called ya.
No, I've seen them up there at the feed home. Won't have anything unless you guys have something, I don't know if we wanna go ahead and give it a noon whistle. And implement the month three.
Was it about the information regarding departments?
That was, um, we've had that on there for the last several months, that's.
Okay, so we're good.
It's shared from the way it'll look.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
We may have to do a meeting, a special meeting at some point. Bye-bye.
Think I got any questions about the police report? What are the feelings about eliminating the noon whistle and implementing a monthly test of the emergency sirens?
What, maybe what you want, they got two, they go to, you want.
Both of them, both of them.
You wanna do what, what's that?
No, you don't do away with them, it's just that if we did this testing through Macon, like, once a month, then.
During storm season.
There's no real point in having a noon whistle, we don't have a factory that everybody goes to lunch at twelve.
Cause I know this last round of storms, Centerville's tornado siren did not work, so they.
Ours worked when it went on.
Yeah, but I mean.
I slept there myself, though, so it didn't do me any good.
I heard it.
I did.
I slept there.
I was out in it, I heard it.
But, um. I think we'd be good to test them every month to make sure they work, cause they are dispatched out of a different area.
It's a, it's a whole different process, the noon whistle goes off by a timer, and, uh, Macon dispatch sends a page that activates the sirens, so, we need to make sure it's gonna work.
I can't see any reason to have the noon whistle, is anybody using it as a timer, sir?
Yeah, it serves a purpose.
Not really.
I used to always think it was a way of knowing that our emergency warning sirens were really working, but.
Well, you know, sirens work.
Has nothing to do with it.
It's the siren, but it's where it's triggered from, but, yeah.
The siren itself worked.
Yeah.
Well, when we had, uh, two of the identical sirens, at one time, we didn't know that one of them had quit working.
Oh, right, yeah.
Over by the firehouse, when they both sounded the same, nobody had noticed.
Right.
Until somebody lived close by.
Now, now.
How come the, cause it hadn't went off for.
Yeah.
Several months.
So, is that why they're on stagger times?
No, they're two different sirens now, we had to replace one, so.
Yeah.
You guys don't like the noon whistle?
Well, you can't do the noon whistle and the tornado sirens together, so it's one or the other.
I think we need the testing, I'm like you, I think we need the test, monthly test.
It actually sets the tornado warnings off, make.
Dispatch, make.
This, here, I can make it.
Through the nine-one-one dispatch.
Cause when I got the tornado warning, I called them, had them send them off, so. Got to wake everybody up.
How's everybody?
My phone woke me up.
Yeah, my phone. My phone didn't go either.
I seen it out in the backyard, like, hey, that's a weird looking cloud, phone kinda goes off.
Yeah.
Nope, their phone either.
Cause of weather radio.
Well, neither weather had me, I was a big dog.
Need a weather radio, dog.
So, do we have a motion to eliminate the noon whistles and go with testing the tornado sirens monthly during tornado season?
There you go, pulling back a little bit.
I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
Wonder if they're gonna test them now?
Well, I've set up a.
I'm kidding.
Turn the day, something.
Yep.
Yeah. It won't need to put something in the paper that that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, so, is it, it'll be like the first Tuesday in the month?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Brian Banks, he's the one.
He's the one that had requested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, next month?
Probably coordinate with, cause I think that, maybe do herd ones once a month, we'll just, maybe.
At the same time?
Both pages at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we need to vote to recommend appointments to the Knox County Commissioners to represent the city on the Northeast Regional Planning Commission Executive Solid Waste Management and Transportation Committee.
So, there are the three different, as you can see, the three different things, uh, which it can be, all kinds of different people, but, just so you know, they meet in the daytime.
At ten o'clock in the morning.
And we need somebody that will show up, and I think maybe the mayor said she would be willing, uh, but.
What day?
That depends, it's usually a Tuesday, but, I talked to Chris Bean, and he said the OJ will send out three or four different dates, and which one most people can come to is the date that they do.
Yeah. And there's no conflict with being on all three?
No, I talked, um, actually, um, Les Card will ask me about it, and he said you just go from one meeting, they adjourn, then the next meeting, and they adjourn, and then you do the last one, so. But he said, he thinks that we need somebody there. Then he said he thinks that we need somebody there, and so, with us being the biggest town in the county. Generally, if anything comes through the county, it'll come through here, so he said, we need somebody there. And if anybody else wants to go, that's great, but I would be willing to go. Don't everybody jump at once.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be at work, so.
Yes, and it's hard.
Yeah, and that's the thing, they, you know, they do during the day, which naturally is convenient for them, because they're at work. Um, but, for boards throughout the five counties or whatever, but it's not as easy to get people to show up.
Well, everybody works.
Yeah.
Everybody works, right?
It's not too hard, I can usually get days off if I go ahead of time, so, that's really.
And they meet quarterly, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, is there any nominations?
You're in motion, yeah?
Thanks, Rick.
Rick. And Delmar.
Any opposed? Dang it.
For the mayor to represent the city on all three of these.
All in favor?
And we send this recommendation to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners are actually the ones that. Let regional planning know that, okay, uh, representatives for Edina will be.
Shortlist.
Yeah, I'll put your hand up, we'll put you, we'll put you in place.
Thank you. Okay. Um, the mayor's report, the only thing I was gonna talk about was the clubhouse out at there. There have been coons in there. And at this point, I'm not looking at wanting to remodel it, we need to fix where those coons are coming in, and they need to clean out that. Cause the carpet stinks, and there's. Raccoon evidence out there, that, you know, like a, a rainy day project, take some dumpsters out there and clean that out. And Roger and I have talked about that, but, um, if you don't clean it out now, it's just gonna.
Well, it's a step, it's a start.
It's just gonna fall apart and get worse. So. Fix the coon hole and clean it out when you get time. Okay, um. Echo, do you have any comments?
Uh, I just want to remind the council that we're probably gonna need some sand at the. Um, volleyball court at the Edina City Lake. I don't, if a mysterious load of sand just shows up there, that would be awesome. Um, but we might wanna think about getting a load of sand, and I have meant to check around and I have not had time to.
Do they use that out there?
Well, it's just, it's new, I mean.
It's new.
Okay.
Oh. The most I've, time I've really spent there was during fair week last year, and during that time, yes, they did, there was kids down there playing volleyball during the. Fair. For fair week, so.
Okay. Alderman comments?
So, how was the kids' fishing day? I never have heard anything about that.
It was great.
Paid for water and I was in Kentucky.
Rick is gonna be on the front page of this week's newspaper, Rick Yocum, ladies and gentlemen, there he is. Having the time of his life.
Go. Did you catch any fish?
Yeah, one, we were caught a couple.
Think we need to talk to somebody about mowing the grass out there like they were supposed to.
They had, they did the barbecue, and so they had food and fishing, and there was upwards of seventy. Um, youth that participated, and then, of course, they came with their adults, and so it was. It seems like it's getting bigger every year, and it's a good time, and they come out, rain or shine, you know, we've learned that over, this is the fourth year. And every year, it seems a little bit better, so, they have fishing poles for, if you don't have a fishing pole, it don't matter, they'll give you one. Um, shirts for kids to sign up ahead of time, you know, all of that, but even that, you don't need to sign up ahead of time to go. Participate, we had Department Conservation was out there with, didn't they have a snake? Were showing off a snake, you know. Different kind of tables set up around, uh, four H barn, you know, with, uh, just different things going on and kids playing, it was a. It was nice, very nice.
Anybody else got any more? Things they wanna talk about?
I'm actually gonna turn.
Rick?
I second it.
David.